Testing, one, two, three.
Check one two.
Thank you for watching! Please like, subscribe and share the video. This is my channel, and I hope you enjoy it.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We'll start the meeting in just a moment. If I could ask members of council to take their seats. Je vous invite les membres du conseil municipal à venir dans une minute.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bonjour mesdames et messieurs. Bienvenue au Conseil municipal de l'Orléans à Ottawa pour le 8 juin.
Welcome to the city council meeting for June 8, 2016.
Remain standing as we introduce our special guest who will sing the national anthem. If you can remain standing, I'll ask our colleague George Deruz to introduce our special guest who will sing our national anthem. Counselor Deruz.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you. Singing the anthem this morning for us will be Isabella Maneuver Pelton, a grade 10 student at Asgard Township High School. Isabella recently won the senior Greely Idol competition. As part of her winning, she was invited to sing this morning at City Hall. Congratulations. In this past year, she has also competed and placed in many vocal contests, including Ottawa Idol, Asgard's Got Talent, the Russell Fair, and Spencerville Fair. Oldest at 16 years old. Izzy also step dances and has placed at several local events. She performed last year at the Mayor Rural Expo. She has been also a school ambassador and recently a leader in her Free the Children group in the high school. In her spare time, she rides her horses, her horse, plays soccer and tennis, skis, skates, and plays the piano and guitar. I would like to thank you, Isabella, for taking time out from your busy schedule to come and sing the national anthem here for us. Please enjoy.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love, in our eyes and skin. Car ton bras se porte le pays, il se porte la croix. Ton histoire est une epoque de plus brillante et exploite. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.[1593.12][1593.12](Applause).
At this time, I'd like to invite Marcel Gibaud to the podium. Je vais monsieur Marcel Gibaud.
I would like to invite Marcel Gibaud to the podium with his councillor, Jody Middick. Your friends and your family are here. And please, Jody Middick, would you join us?
Monsieur Gibaud habite à Léon de.
Mister Gibaud has been a resident of Orleans for over 40 years, and he's a proud Franco-Ontarian.
Monsieur Gibaud has held numerous positions from president to treasurer over his almost 30 years with the chamber. Aye en, eu une longue carrière.
He has had a long career as an accountant, and he also has contributed his financial expertise to community organizations. He's also a devoted member of Rendezvous des Anys Franco-Fonds d'At Ottawa. He has served in many roles within the organization.
Member of Rendezvous des Anys Franco-Fonds d'At Ottawa, RAFO, and has served many, has served in many roles, including president, treasurer, administrator, and is a volunteer managing financial administration and fundraising. Monsieur Gibaud has also given of his time, skills, and leadership in establishing and supporting several other community groups, such as la Société Franco-Ontarienne de Patrimoine de l'Histoire d'Aléan, Mouvement d'Implication Franco-Fonds d'Aléan, MIFO, the Orleans Recreation Complex, the Bob McCoy Recreation Complex. Votre leadership and enthusiasm est une inspiration intangable.
Your leadership and enthusiasm are an inspiration to so many people in our community. You have demonstrated that it's possible to get involved and to make a real difference.
...Ontarian culture as well as to your community in the East End. Merci beaucoup pour votre dévouement.
Thank you for your dedication to Franco-Ontarian culture as well as your community.
De la ville d'At Ottawa. Il me fait plaisir de vous présenter.
And I have the pleasure to give you the Builders Award for Ottawa. Thank you.
(Applause).
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Middick. This honor reminds me of the 45 years I spent in Orleans, a small Franco-Fond village of 5,000 people in '71. It's now more than 100,000. I am pleased to make a difference. And I would also thank people who are close to me. And I would also thank people who are close to me. We are a community and economic organization. And also, I'd like to talk about the MIFO, which today has been in evolution and has greatly evolved. And so also, we have contributed to RAFO. And we put in place an organization that meets the needs of Francofond seniors who still have a lot of energy after retirement. And I'll, also, I'd like to thank specifically my colleagues and my friends who have submitted my submission or candidacy. And also, thank you to my father, who's very sick, who can't be here. It's thanks to him that I am so involved in the community. And finally, 45 years ago, I found a beautiful lady who decided to be my companion, Claudette, my wife. Thank you for her support over those 45 years, and especially her patience, and for getting involved in those causes. Thank you.[682.04][682.04](Applause). Thank you again, Marcel.
I now ask Marjorie Schaefer-Jones to join me at the podium for a special presentation. Welcome, Marjorie, and you've got family and friends with you, as well as your ward councillor Rick Shirelli. Welcome. Nice to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here comes councillor Shirelli. Je vénito si.
I would also like Rick Shirelli, her councillor, to join us.
On behalf of the province of Ontario and my council colleagues, it's my pleasure to recognize Marjorie with the Ontario Senior of the Year Award for the city of Ottawa. It's fitting that we present this award this month, as June is seniors' month in Ontario. And June 2016 marks the 32nd anniversary of seniors' month in Ontario. Juin 2016 marque la 32e anniversaire.
June 2016 marks the 32nd anniversary of seniors' month in Ontario.
It is clear that Ms. Schaefer-Jones is definitely making a difference here in our community. She was a teacher in the late '60s, and since then, she has worked with the federal government for Indian and Northern Affairs, on northern roads and public works, as a senior manager in several different capacities. She was director of communications responsible for the government's conference services, and she retired at the age of 55 and has been a great volunteer in our community ever since. During her time as executive of the Copland Park Community Association, Ms. Schaefer-Jones has represented the CPC A with an annual letter to her city councillor and mayor with her priority list for the city budget. Some of her accomplishments include her involvement with the Centre Point Development Plan, which was a huge undertaking, traffic on Ontario roads, including Maitland, Clyde, and Maryville, where she is still a key part of communication about traffic issues, successfully worked to remove additional vehicle access roadway to Copland, played a key role with the CPC A in regards to the closure of Laurentian High School, along with the sale of the building and the Smart Centre's building proposal, and she volunteered to be the CPC A representative with the Federation of Community Associations while it was still an early initiative. Ms. Schaefer-Jones has also been, as a number of accomplishments, as president of the CPC A, such as raising money through the committee barbecue for the Queensway Carlton Hospital Foundation, working with her local city councillor and the Ottawa Police regarding traffic concerns within the community, replacement of community mailboxes within the Copland Park community, and her involvement with Green Lawn Park Puddle Ring Project and the Green Lawn Park Tennis Court Resurfacing Project. Ms. Schaefer-Jones has also been involved in her committee through her role on the steering committee of the Art Lending of Ottawa program. She has also organized and administered the program focused on exercising for seniors, runs the adult book club at the Sunnyside branch of the Ottawa Public Library, and is involved with Canada Theatre. You have a lot on your plate, don't you? It's my sincere pleasure, on behalf of the province of Ontario, to present Ms. Schaefer-Jones with the Ontario Senior of the Year Award. Congratulations, felicitatio, and keep up the great work.[893.44][893.44](Applause).
Mr. Mayor, councillor Shirelli, councillors, I want to thank you. It's quite overwhelming to be selected for this honor when there are so many equally deserving individuals within our city and across our province. Someone I respect once told me that you can judge a person's age by the discomfort you witness when that person confronts new ideas. With that in mind, I've always tried to be open to fresh thinking. I've tried to use my mind, my talents, and my creativity to enrich both my own life and the lives of those who share an interest in volunteering to make Ottawa a better place. New ideas offer opportunities. I will continue to be interested in my city, my community, and the many cultural and artistic endeavors that enrich our lives here. The years may wrinkle my skin, but I will never let closed thinking or apathy wrinkle my soul. I thank you again for this honor and privilege.[984.32][984.32](Applause).
Beautiful words. Thank you very, very much. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. You know how to teach a student. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all the family members of both our recipients for being with us today and neighbors. It's great to see that community support. A roll call, please, madam, deputy clerk.
Consiglière Manette.
Président.
Councilleur Medic.
Present.
Councilleur Harder.
Here.
Councilleur Wilkinson.
Present.
Councilleur Chantiri.
Present.
Councilleur Cadri.
Present.
Councilleur Taylor.
You see.
Councilleur Shirelli.
Here.
Councilleur Egli.
Here.
Councilleur Deans.
Here.
Councilleur Tierney.
Present.
Consiglière Clery.
You see.
Councilleur Neusbaum.
Here.
Councilleur McKenney.
Present.
Sir Leeper.
Here.
Sir Brockington.
Here.
Councilleur Chernoshenko.
Present.
Consiglière Cutier.
Yee-haw!
Consiglière Blay.
Here.
Councilleur Deruz.
Here.
Councilleur Moffett.
Here.
Councilleur Kakish.
Present.
Councilleur Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
Here.
But could I mention Monsieur Ma?
I should point.
You have the call.
...of members of council, and the announcement will be coming up more formally, but Money Sense magazine, which is a national magazine, has ranked Ottawa as the best place to live and work in in the entire country. So that's something I think we can be very, very proud of, and thank you, Money Sense Magazine.[1109.24][1109.24](Applause). That's a great accomplishment, and certainly something I know Invest Ottawa and other groups will use to market, to continue market, as a great place to invest in and encourage people to move to. Confirmation amendments, adoption of process verbe pour le 25 mai 2016. Declarations of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings, declaration de conflit d'intérêt. None. Communications as presented, regrets, no regrets filed to date. Motion to introduce reports. Motion important, presentation of report, conseil Leeper and Moffett, s'il vous plaît.
Good morning, Mayor. Moved that Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee Report 17, Audit Committee Report 7, and Transportation Committee Report 15 be received and considered, and that the rules of procedure subsection 29.3 be suspended to receive and consider Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 15 due to timelines, and that the petition from residents concerning the airport parkway listed under communications be received.
On the motion, carried, adoptez, merci. First is, excuse me, Committee Reports, Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee Report number 17, Rapport numéro 17 du Comité de l'Agriculture des Affaires Rurales. Number one, Water Environment Strategy Phase II, Stratégie de le Milieu Aquatique Phase II. Carried. Next is zoning bylaw amendment, part of 3940 Dunning Road, modification du règlement de zonage parti de trois neuf quatre sur le chemin, Dunning. Councillor Blay and Moffett have a technical amendment to ensure that the French and the English match up. So councillor Blay, please.
You've explained very well, Mr. Mayor, the French recommendation had language issues, so it's simply amending the French to be consistent with the English. It's, it's, it's to amend the French recommendation to be the same as the English recommendation.
Okay, so on the Blay, Moffett motion, carried. On the item before us as amended, carried, adoptez. Audit Committee Report number seven, Rapport numéro 17 du Comité de Vérification. Item number three, Office of the Auditor General Report on the follow-up of the audit of the Treasury function, Bureau de Vérificateur Général Rapport sur le suivi de la vérification de la fonction de la traisoire. Received. Item number four, 2015 City of Ottawa Consolidated Financial Statements that the council approved, the draft 2015 City of Ottawa Consolidated Financial Statements, État Financière Consolidée de 2015 de la ville d'Ontario. Carried. Item number five, Smart City Initiatives. Carried. Consent by councillor Shirelli. Item number six, Transportation Committee Report number 15, Rapport numéro 15, Comité de Transport. Questions, and we have a, an amendment as well, so we'll come back to that item. Bulk consent agenda, does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? On the bulk consent agenda as presented. Carried. Okay. So we'll come back to the first item that's been held. Transportation Committee number, report number 15, numéro 15. We have an Egli and Moffett technical amendment, I believe. Councilleur Egli, if you'd like to introduce it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, there was, there was a technical amendment to correct a clerical, in effect, clerical error on the wording of the report. The report indicates that the Environmental Stewardship Advisory Committee was part of the consultation process. In fact, they were not, though there were a large number of stakeholders we work with, Healthy Transportation Ottawa, Citizens for Safe Cycling, Accessibility Advisory Committee, and so on. So the report should reflect the accurate groups that we did in fact work with, so it's simply to amend the report, remove the reference to ESAC.
Okay, thank you. So on the technical amendment, carried. Councilleur Neusbaum has a question. I don't have the monitor here to determine who is wanting to speak, so I know councillor Neusbaum wants to speak.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you. Although I did attend the transportation committee meeting, I didn't have the ability to stay for questions to staff, which is why I'm posing a series of questions now on the environmental assessment study and report. The first question to staff, just based on the report on page 22, talks about the, the traffic projections for 2031 north of Brookfield Road, and then talks about how 70% of the 600 vehicles an hour, which I assume is peak directional, will be crossing the Rideau River. So let's assume in the morning going north over the Rideau River, and says that only 30 vehicles an hour northbound will continue on Bronson Avenue North. But given that 70% will be crossing the Rideau River, and I assume only a small number exiting at Sunnyside and Carlton, what numbers of the roughly 600 is it assumed will be entering into the downtown core? So it was just a piece of information missing from this paragraph. We have 30 cars continuing of the 600 on Bronson, but we don't have a figure for how many additional vehicles will be entering the downtown core, i.e. the bulk of the 70% crossing south on the Rideau River. Again, I'm using an AM peak as an example.
Mr. Mayor, I have with us at the table here Mark Baker with Parsons, who can respond to this question about the, the traffic volumes filtering into the downtown.
Hi there. I believe the question is of how many will enter into downtown? So there are a notable number of turning movements into Carlton University and, and Queen Elizabeth and Colonel By that exist today, so we anticipate those will continue in the future. Looking at 2031, the model projections indicate an increase of 30 vehicles per hour heading towards downtown compared.
Okay, that's a very different, that's a very different figure from what is cited in the report. The report says 30 additional vehicles north on Bronson with turnoffs onto Colonel By and Queen Elizabeth heading north, but now you're saying that the total number from the 600 is going to be 30 total entering the downtown core. So what does that do for the northbound Colonel By and Queen Elizabeth volumes? You're saying there will be no cars turning northbound onto Colonel By or Queen Elizabeth from Bronson?
Well, there will, there will be traffic turning on to Colonel By and Queen Elizabeth, as well as into Carlton University and Sunnyside.
Are those not, is entering, is a turning movement going northbound on Colonel By not in the definition entering the downtown core? If, if that vehicle, say, is going to Laurier Avenue? That's not entering the downtown core?
There is the potential that, yes, those vehicles will continue on to the downtown core.
There is the potential. Okay, yes. I would suggest that there is a high probability that cars going northbound in the morning, exiting on Colonel By, are going to end up in the official plan definition of the downtown core, but we can agree to disagree, I guess, on that point. My second question relating to the report was there are a number of capital cost tables which were provided. I'm wondering whether, as part of the environmental assessment, given that the cost, some of the capital costs were mentioned under the financial implications on page four, whether there was an estimate of the ongoing operating costs of the increased widening as proposed.
Counselor, can you speak closer to the microphone? People on this side can't hear you.
I don't know whether staff or not. The question was on ongoing operating costs of the proposed or the recommended widening?
Mr. Mayor, the operating costs is not part of this report, but certainly we would have that when we present it during the budgeting process to seek funding for the implementation of this project. Operating costs don't affect the outcome of an EA, so we would not require it to be put in here because if it changes, then we may have to do an EA amendment to it.
Okay, I was, that's fair enough. I was looking for precision on my back, back of the envelope calculations, which I'm sure are not exact, but using the Ontario Municipal Benchmarking Initiative figures that the city provided for 2014 of the costs per operating at a lane kilometer on a roadway, and multiplying that number by the 18 kilometers of additional lanes, I came up with a rough figure of $400,000 a year in additional operating costs. Would you say that that's a reasonable methodology to use to, to estimate the operating cost?
It's reasonable, yes.
Okay, thank you. My next question concerns the traffic projections, and I read through the Parsons report and through the report and saw that there was a lot of work done on estimating traffic projections for 2031. What I didn't see, and I may have missed it, but I couldn't tell, or I couldn't see traffic projections that were different from the baseline scenario of no widening and the recommended widening scenario. So I didn't see how the projections for 2031 would be different in a baseline versus in the recommended approach. Can somebody tell me whether I missed that somewhere?
Do you mean by baseline? Could you explain that, please?
Sure. So in a two-lane, if we did nothing, the do-nothing option, you would have a certain assumption of traffic projection volumes on the airport parkway, assuming a two-lane road in the areas which are recommended. road in the areas which are recommended for widening. I assume that if that portion of the roadway were widened, then the 2031 projections for that road portion would be different, and I assume greater than in a case where there were only two lanes of traffic.
The volume forecast would be the same regardless of whether the airport parkway was widened or not?
So notwithstanding that the supply of the road in that portion has been doubled, so if you imagine a supply and demand curve, we're shifting the supply curve of the roadway, you are assuming no increase in demand on that portion of the roadway. That's what I just heard you say, correct? Wow. I find that astounding, but my time is up, so I guess I can't ask any more questions. But the fact that the modeling has not taken into account induced demand element, I do find truly astonishing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor McKenney, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to pick up from Transportation Committee, because I had asked the Transportation Committee if a technical analysis had been done that would show the effects of lengthening the on and off ramps at Hunt Club, and I was told that that assessment had not been done, unfortunately, but I was given a technical memorandum here. So I just, my question is, and that shows that the existing volume plus the volume on the ramp exceeds the downstream mainline capacity, so the capacity for the road. And while I can't necessarily argue with the numbers for volume, even though I kind of question them, I think that they're high, but that's only because I've been watching traffic cameras lately. The capacity today, the downstream mainline capacity I've been given here is 1,600 vehicles per hour per lane. And I just wonder, it doesn't seem very high to me, given that it's, this is a pretty modern roadway, it's got pretty wide lanes, it has no intersections, I don't think anything else happens for one and a half to two kilometers. And then if you consider the two-second rule, which again I know is not engineering, but if you consider the two-second rule, which is what cars are supposed to follow each other at, given, you know, two seconds in between, most don't, I don't, but that would, with 3,600 seconds in an hour, that would give you capacity for 1,800 cars, and I think that I'm being conservative there. So I just wonder where the 1,600 comes from. It's probably from your Highway Capacity Manual, but even if it is, is there no way of determining what the true capacity of a different type of road, different roadways are in the city?
Base our calculations on what a roadway is rated on based on information we get from the Highway Capacity Manual. This is the guide we use to base our assumptions on what the capacity will be.
Matt, there we go.
My mic. Oh, here I am, thank you. So the Highway Capacity Manual that you use, I note here is the 2001, and there's now a 2010. Is that still the same number for 2010? So any, so the capacity for any roadway at any time at any speed is 1,600 vehicles per hour per lane?
It all depends on the type of roadway, how many accesses there are, how many intersections, what effect these accesses may have on the volume expected to go travel through that portion of roadway in a given time.
But I'll be able to look at this manual and see that a road like Hunt Club that has no intersections at this point, that's wide, that's got good shoulders, that has no other kind of turbulence, if you will, for close to two kilometers, that that will be the capacity for a roadway such as this?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning to everyone. I have received some additional concerns or questions from my community about this study since the committee meeting, and Mr. McKenney and I have traded some emails, and I just wanted to confirm on the public record the following. It's my understanding, because construction is not commencing right away, that the construction timelines we have arranged but are not yet confirmed, that when funding does become available to design the project, the file will be forwarded to the Infrastructure Services Department to complete the preliminary and detailed design of the project, and as part of the exercise, detailed traffic analysis will be completed to verify the projections or the numbers used as part of the EA. So the concern in the community is that X number of years from now, the traffic volumes may change, and we don't want to be proceeding with a project with old data or traffic numbers which may not reflect reality. So just again, confirmation from staff, will there be a revised traffic study or analysis done before this project proceeds in the future?
Mr. Mayor, if there's a long gap of time between today and implementation, it is only good planning practice to revisit the assumptions, just to make sure that the design is appropriate, given the lapse in time. And it's not just this, it's also species at risk and all those other things that we need to look at.
And how do we define the gap? What number of years would trigger another review? Would we do it after three years, five years?
We don't have timelines for that specific. We would have to look, monitor the situation. It's, this is a living document, what happens here at the city as well, so we have other mechanisms to assess the state of traffic on Walkley.
I would strongly request that when the time comes to proceed with this project, we reflect on revising the traffic study or analysis to make sure those numbers are as accurate as possible. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brockington. Councillor Chenushenko, please.
Yes, thank you. Minor more comments and stating my view on this as opposed to questions to staff. At this time, I had the opportunity to do that at committee, which I did. Simply, I will be voting no against this because of my concerns of induced demand, is the term that's being heard more and more, that with all of our efforts to build, invest in, build, and promote the use of light rail and transit, that I still see expanding capacity, if we were to do that before the light rail was actually up and running and people had a chance to use it, that we would essentially be paying money with both hands, one to encourage people to keep driving, while at the same time spending money to encourage people to use the train instead. And although I know there's not a direct correlation of the users of this parkway with the users of the train, I think there's a strong enough crossover that I would certainly want to see that rail be given a chance to thrive before we were to go down the traditional road of, road route of expanding roads. For that reason, I'll be voting against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Egli, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have more comments than questions. When we dealt with this matter at Transportation Committee, I referred to the need in our city for balance in how we address our transportation needs. We're a large, complex city, we encompass everything from farmland to intensified urban area, we have the green belt to deal with, and there is no, to my mind, there is no single silver bullet that is going to solve all our transportation issues. LRT is a wonderful thing, we had another announcement about it this morning, we had an announcement last week about it. These are steps that we're taking forward, but LRT, road widening, complete streets, more money spent on cycling than ever before, these are all parts of a much larger puzzle. One thing is not going to fix the transportation woes of this city, it's not going to deal with the congestion of the city. This is one piece of that solution. And I just wanted to take the time to thank staff for the work that they did, most importantly, the work that they did with the community. I was at those community open houses, I heard what residents had to say about their concerns and their questions about the EA and the proposed design work, and staff rose to the occasion on many circumstances, dealing with wildlife issues, dealing with noise and attenuation, dealing with adding cycling facilities, and other pieces of work, talking about traffic calming and signage. So I want to thank staff for listening, for staff working cooperatively with the community. I want to thank the community in those areas as well for coming out and making those suggestions to staff and giving them ideas to improve upon the project that's before us today. But again, I go back to my central theme, it is about balance. We can't, if we could find one simple solution, we would do that, but it's much more complicated than that, and we have to look at everything from cycling to road widening and everything in between. And I think this project is a good balance of that, it responds to community needs, and I will certainly be supporting it as I did at committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other comment there?
Any other comments?
Report, carried. Dissent by McKenney, Neusbaum, Leeper, and Chenushenko and Cloutier. Okay, thank you. Motion to adopt reports. Councillor Leeper, please. Seconded by councillor Moffat.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to adopt reports that Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee report 17, Audit Committee report seven, Finance and Economic Development Committee report 15, and Transportation Committee report 15 be received and adopted as amended.
Carried, adopté. Motions of which notice have been previously given. I have a motion moved by myself, seconded by councillor Brockington, and I'd like to recognize Sean McKenney, who is with us here today from the Ottawa District Labor Council President, and Sean was very helpful in helping to craft this motion for us, so we thank him. Whereas it's been five decades since the collapse of the Heron Road Bridge during construction on August 10, 1966, which caused the deaths of nine workers and injured 55 more, and whereas the disaster prompted significant changes to construction workplace safety standards in the province of Ontario, and whereas the deaths of 26 workers of the Westray Mine Disaster on May 9, 1992 prompted the federal government to amend the Criminal Code of Canada in 2004 to hold corporations, their directors, and executives criminally accountable for the health and safety of workers, the Westray Amendments, and whereas despite these legislative changes, according to the most recent statistics compiled by the Association of Workers Compensation Boards of Canada, 919 workers across Canada died in 2014 as a result of workplace accidents or illnesses, and this rate of workplace death and injury has not abated since. And whereas it was not until June 2015 that the first conviction under the Westray Amendments was obtained by the province of Ontario, therefore be it resolved, the Ottawa City Council petitioned the Attorney General and the Labor Minister for the province of Ontario to improve coordination between Occupational Health and Safety Act investigators, police, and Crown attorneys, with a view to ensuring that the spirit and intent of the Westray Amendments are properly considered and applied in all cases of workplace fatalities and serious injuries. And it's seconded by councillor Brockington, and in tandem with this, there's also a request that's been brought forward that councillor Brockington and I will be bringing to the Commemorative Naming Committee to rename the Heron Road Bridge that would be continued to be called the Workers Memorial Heron Road Bridge, which is in councillor Brockington's ward. So I would ask for your support of this motion that allows us to communicate directly with Madame Mayor, who is the Attorney General, and Kevin Flynn, who is the Labor Minister, to let them know council's view on worker safety in the city of Ottawa. On the motion, carried, adopté, merci. Motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. We have a motion by councillor McKenney, seconded by councillor Egli, that the rules of procedure be suspended due to timelines, as this event will begin in the next scheduled city council meeting, prior rather, the next city council meeting, to be considered. The following motion with respect to Spark Street and a special event. On suspension of the rules, carried. Councillor McKenney, if you'd like to introduce the motion, please.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. As a steadfast vegetarian, I'm arguing I'm in favor of the Rib Fest, but I'm sure there'll be lots of options for everyone. I have coleslaw, there'll be coleslaw.
Fries.
And fries. Whereas Spark Street BIA is to hold the 24th Annual Rib Fest Festival, and whereas Spark Street, from Lion Street to Bay Street, is required to be closed, and whereas the closure of Spark Street from Lion Street to Bay Street, as outlined, is required to accommodate the event setup commencing at 9:00 a.m. on Tuesday, June 21, 2016, and whereas the street festivities will commence on the morning of Wednesday, June 22, 2016, and set up at the street party stage and other street attractions takes several days, and whereas the City of Ottawa Special Events on City Roadways bylaw 2001-260 prohibits road closures before 6:00 p.m. Monday to Friday, and whereas the Spark Street road closure will end and reopen at 7:00 p.m. Sunday, June 26, 2016, therefore be it resolved that in order to allow for the issuance of the required permits, council approve the closure of Spark Street from Lion Street to Bay Street from 9:00 a.m. on Tuesday, June 21, 2016, to 7:00 p.m. on Sunday, June 26, 2016, providing it meets all terms and conditions contained within the issued permit and has coleslaw and fries. Woo-hoo.
Yes and ayes?
Yes and ayes.
On the motion, carried. We look forward to another great festival downtown. Are there any other motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure? Notices of motion for consideration at a subsequent meeting. Notice of intent from Hydro Ottawa Holdings, Inc. to hold the annual general meeting of the shareholder at the city council meeting scheduled for June 22, 2016. Motion to introduce bylaws. Councillor Leeper and Moffat, please.
The motion to introduce bylaws, that the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
On the motion, carried, adopté. Confirmation bylaw, councillor Leeper, please.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of 8th of June, 2016.
Carried. I'd like to point out that our colleague, Tim Tierney, was elected Vice President of Ontario for the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, and I believe with the largest plurality of any of the elections in Winnipeg, and we want to congratulate councillor Tierney and ask if he'd give us a comment on FCA.
Great, thank you for that, Mr. Mayor, and yes, it's an honor. I've been elected to the FCM board for five years, but three years in a row I've been selected by a jury of my own peers in Ontario to be the Chair of Ontario, so it's a great privilege, I'm very humbled and honored, of course. I think there was also another good news story, and when our keynote speaker, Prime Minister Justin Trudeau, really acknowledged that there's a major role for municipalities within the federal government. So that being said, are we under attack? Thanks, Matt. But just to close, I also got to, on behalf of your worship and council, express how excited we are for Ottawa 2017, where we'll be having the AGM here in Ottawa with over 2,000 host municipalities. There's a lot of excitement, look forward to it, and thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, councillor. Madam Deputy Clerk, with any written inquiries adjourned, councillor Leeper, seconded by councillor Moffat.
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of 8th of June, 2016 be adjourned.
Carried, adopté, merci. Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.